Nope, it was always there.
Where's the commercial?
Made sense.
You guys ready? Pat, are you ready?
Yes.
Alright. I will go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission meeting for October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. First on our agenda is to adopt our agenda. Do we have any additions or adjustments?
One quick question. It says that our next meeting is on November seventh, and that's a Wednesday.
Right, because the election is on Tuesday.
Just wanted to verify. Thanks.
Thanks. No other adjustments? I'll move that we approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will proceed accordingly. Next is approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting from September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. Did anybody have any adjustments or additions?
None here.
I had just one that I had noticed, and maybe this is more about consistency. I noticed how we summarize how motions were carried. On some of them, we say seven zero. On item C on page three, we just say motion carried. I've seen it before where we say motion carried unanimously. So, I don't know if we want, pick one and we be consistent in terms of how we summarize the motions?
Absolutely.
Alright.
That's where two of us are taking minutes. We swap back and forth, but we'll get it so it's consistent.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking that in the future, as we go back and reflect on how votes were characterized, you know, if it's inconsistent, does that create ambiguity, so?
That's good.
Anything else? I move that we approve of the minutes as presented with that minor adjustment. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so tonight we've got three public hearings under discussion items. And I'll just start, for those of you who are new to the Planning Commission meeting, as we go through, we'll talk about each of these items independently. Typically, we start with staff overview of the subject material. Planning Commission will have a general discussion, ask some questions, at which point then I'll open up the public hearing. And you all are welcome to come up and state your name and address at the podium, share any thoughts that you have. And once we've heard from everybody, we'll make a motion to close the public hearing, have additional discussion, and then propose action at that time. So, first up tonight for the public hearing is Vassar Preliminary Platte and rezoning. Who's going to walk us through that one?
Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Hartman Communities is requesting to rezone approximately nine point two acres of land and replat it for preliminary plat application for tonight for a twenty-nine lot detached villa development. Location of the property is on the screen. It's on the west side of County Road eleven. North of it is Lake Town Eighth. Down here is Marsh Lake Road to the south. Back in two thousand four, the city council, see that, approved a Lake Town site plan that surrounds the subject site. Again, the subject site is this white rectangle to the south. North of it was approved to be townhomes, and south of it was approved to be townhomes. And then Lake Town surrounded it. Back in two thousand fifteen, the city council approved Lake Town Eighth Edition, which turned these townhomes into single-family residences. The original concept plan, which didn't come to the Planning Commission, but it came to staff, was following the R-two development standards. It had a bridleway extension of Lake Town Eighth Edition and then a cul-de-sac. And it removed most of the trees in that wooded area. Then they, what you saw at the concept plan of the Planning Commission, was the developer saved more of the trees and added this trail connection connecting these two cul-de-sacs. And this was for thirty-three villa lots. Then the applicant submitted plans for the preliminary plat, reduced the number of villa lots from thirty-three to thirty, saving more of the woods in the back, about half of the woods. And then after their application dismissal, staff reviewed it, and we actually recommended the developer remove one of the lots. And the main reason to, there's a number of reasons to remove one of the lots. One of the main reasons is to provide a larger buffer along County Road eleven, right? Then it was only thirty feet. By removing one of the lots, he was able to meet the minimum standards of the zoning ordinance. It requires a forty-foot buffer along arterials. Not only that, it would preserve more of the woods in that wooded area. And then the other, the other main thing about that, if you can see in this preliminary plat, just north of that in Lake Town Eighth, that outlot where they have the berm now is about twenty feet wide. And the reason why they don't, they can't provide the eight-foot berm, I'll get into that in a little bit, the height, because of this width of this lot is essentially because of the bridleway location. It kind of dictates that there's villa lots on this side of the road and then have a smaller right-of-way area, landscaping area, so that you can't provide an eight-foot berm. But one of the great things about eliminating one of the lots is that now they're able to move bridleway ten feet further to the west, so it doesn't make this development in the future have that same predicament that you have such a narrow width between bridle lane and then County Road eleven. So, this is the proposal that they submitted that's in your packet. They have, they moved bridleway ten feet. They have forty feet for the landscaping area. And they saved more of the trees, so over half of the trees are being saved. The twenty-nine detached villa lots are generally fifty-six feet wide and a hundred and thirty-five feet deep, so an average lot size of seven thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, which is slightly smaller than the lots to the north. This provides a gross density of three point three units per acre and a net density of four and a half units per acre. The comprehensive plan guides this site as low-density residential with a density range of one point five to five point nine units per acre. So, what is being proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Access to development will be a road eccentric on bridleway, bridleways, excuse me. A cul-de-sac would serve most of the homes that you can see on the screen. The community development department recommended an island in the cul-de-sac since a homeowners, because since a homeowners association would be maintaining the entire development, we thought this would be appropriate, so since they have to maintain that island as well, it wouldn't be the Public Works that'd be maintaining it. But after we saw the island, we showed it to Public Works, and they said we have to eliminate the island for snow storage. So, one of the conditions now is actually to have to eliminate the island. The setbacks are very consistent with the R-two setbacks. Twenty-five-foot front yard setbacks, rear yard setback would be thirty feet. Their one, in maximum hardcover is fifty-five feet, or fifty-five percent. Two slight differences between what is being proposed and R-two standards is the side yard setback in R-two is eight feet. They're proposing seven and a half feet, pretty much just for a wiggle room. Because if you have fifty-six-foot wide lots with a forty-foot wide villa townhome, you're only, you're left with eight and eight. So, by having seven and a half foot setbacks, you may be able to have a misplacement without needing the variance or without needing somebody to come in and say, "You gotta move that house." So, it really is more for wiggle room than anything else. The corner lot, we're recommending it be twenty feet. Essentially, it's just for these two lots, so right now it is required to be twenty-five feet, but what staff has recommended is twenty feet to reduce this and move it closer to the cul-de-sac road to add a larger setback between this villa home and that home north on bridleway. So, instead of a seven and a half foot setback between this house and that lot line, it would be twelve feet to provide, again, more room between that villa and then that house to the north. One of the things in the ordinance that we need to iron out between now and the city council meeting is the maximum height that we like to, staff would recommend, put in the maximum height. Right now in the R-two zoning district, maximum height is thirty-five feet, so, which is greater than two stories. And we probably, the owners of these villas and staff probably wouldn't want to see these houses being, you know, added on to fifty years from now because of the tight setbacks already. Then it'd be really creating a canyon effect. So, one of the reasons why we're recommending a seven and a half foot setback because they're one-story villas, and so that they won't create a canyon effect as much. So, between now and then, and the city council will figure out what appropriate maximum height would be. The new public streets meet the standards of a sixty-foot right-of-way and a roadway width of twenty-eight feet. Bridleway is planned to be extended to a future Lake Town subdivision to the south. One of the conditions that we have to add is that the preliminary plat includes a temporary cul-de-sac because of the extension of bridleway. The proposed, the developer is planning on selling the lots to Lennar, which is developing Lake Town neighborhood around it. The, Lennar believes that these will be targeted towards empty nesters and sell in a price range of three and a half to four hundred thousand dollars. The, Lennar has five different villa layouts, and each of the layouts have five, four different design options. I'll just go through these real quick. This is the Oxford. This is the Buckingham. This is the Brighton. This is the Barcelona. And then the Valencia. Again, because of the proposed, villas are going to be forty feet wide, and the garage, two-door garage doors will constitute a majority of the facade. Staff is recommending that white trim and garage doors not be allowed in any of the villas since white reflects most of the light and draws attention to the garage doors. Let's see, let's go to the landscaping plan here. How'd that get on there? Now to get that out there?
Let's click on the dead space here. Cat over there.
Okay. Now it's on, I'll. Oh, there it goes. Alright, thanks. Alright, so, there is proposed to be a trail along County Road eleven that would hook up to the trail north of Lake Town. One of the conditions of the approval is that the the trail be moved away from the ditch. Right now it's that, that outlot acts like as the drainage ditch for County Road eleven. So, that, when the applicant will have to move that trail closer to the villas and away from the ditch. There is a sidewalk on the south side of the cul-de-sac and along the west side of bridleway. One of the other conditions, or not a condition, but one of the things we were looking at the developer to do, and he'd be reimbursed, of course, is to add a sidewalk in front of the two homes north of this development. If you go out to the site and you look at it, there's a sidewalk on the north side of, I think, Hackmore Drive. And so, these two lots don't have sidewalks. So, if you go out there, it'd look like sidewalk, two lots without sidewalk, sidewalks again. So, we're hoping that developer will work with the city to install sidewalks, so it's a complete system. And then lastly, the developer is proposing to include a trail that would connect these two developments through the wooded outlot, excuse me. One of the conditions between now and the city council meeting is just that the applicant prove that that trail meets the ADA requirements. Because this development abuts the rear of an existing neighborhood, the landscaping plan relies heavily on evergreen trees to screen the proposed development, to the development to the north. I should go back here, one more thing. When, when staff recommended that the developer eliminate one of the lots to move bridleway over and to save more of the trees, one of the things they did, we were recommending originally removing this lot to the south. What they did was they removed one lot to the north and were still able to accomplish the same thing by moving bridleway and saving more of the trees. But one of the nice things about it is that it removes one more lot behind these homes to the north. So, it acts like more of a buffer to the existing neighborhood to the north and then being able to have more landscaping to the new development to the south. Existing trees will remain behind the lots one, two, and three of block two. And the applicant is also proposing a landscaping buffer along County Road eleven. Another condition that we're having the applicant to do between now and the city council is they can't provide the eight-foot berm, which, again, I'll show you in a second. But what we're requesting them to do is to provide as much of a berm as possible and to show that before that goes to the city council in the next two weeks. The applicant is proposing to have evergreen trees along the trail on County Road eleven. Again, what staff is recommending is adding some deciduous trees along there so that it provides shade for the trail users. So, what the applicant did was they looked at elevation view here through a cross-section and another one through view B, and another one down below on view C. So, this is view A to the north. You see Victoria Drive is at this elevation, and the road is at a higher elevation and at least looks like about ten feet higher than Victoria Drive. And then here's the path, and then the landscaping and the villas. One of the nice things about having villas as opposed to the two-story homes, when you don't, can't provide that eight-foot buffer, or eight-foot berm, I should say, is that the one-story homes aren't going to be as tall as a two-story home, so you can be able to have landscape in there, it will still shield those homes from the views from Victoria Drive. And then this is the halfway down where actually there's a drainage ditch that comes down that drains, and that's why there's a very drop, good-sized drop between Victoria Drive and the path. And then this is the home again. And then here's the south section. Again, Victoria Drive, the house, and then the road, bridleway. The proposed tree preservation plan roughly preserves fifty-five percent of the significant trees on site. The cluster of trees will be amenity for the site, and the outlot will be dedicated to the city. The, in conclusion, the development is adding a desirable component to Victoria's housing mix. The small scale of this development, twenty-nine villas, will allow it to blend in to Victoria's residential environment better than larger developments. By eliminating a lot from the sketch plan, the applicant was able to preserve more of the trees, provide a larger buffer along County Road eleven, but most importantly, move bridleway farther from County Road eleven right-of-way to ensure the development to the south will be able to provide a more sufficient buffer from County Road eleven. Proposed plans roughly preserve fifty-five percent of significant trees on the site, and they'll dedicate the wooded area to the city without the applicant receiving any credit for the parkland dedication. Therefore, staff has recommended approval of the rezoning and preliminary plat subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. And I added a number of conditions, and I made that copy to the, in front of the Planning Commission. And I highlighted them in gray, just to give you a heads-up on one of the conditions. A lot of them are just boilerpoint conditions that will have in typical plats. With that, I'll take any questions. Otherwise, Terry Hartman's here as well, the applicant.
Thanks, Pat. Any comments or questions, Terrell?
While you have this up, I'll just have a quick question. You had mentioned, you know, moving the trail away from that ditch. In elevation view B, it looks like it's smack dab in the middle of that ditch.
That's correct. So, he's going to have to move it further to the left and build a kind of a ledge.
Okay, so you can do.
Right.
So, then the trail out to the west connecting the two cul-de-sacs, is it, the language you used was ADA compliant. Is there federal money involved with this, that we're going to comply with ADA? Because standard procedure would be to comply with the Minnesota State Building Code, which has its own handicap chapter for trails, pathways, and easements. And that's chapter thirteen forty-one. ADA is a standard set forth by the Department of Justice, not any building codes or pathways affiliated with it. And nobody in the city or the state has the authority to enforce an ADA standard. That's only done by the Department of Justice. So, we've got to watch our language when we use that. I think we should look into that and research that.
So, what was the number you?
Chapter thirteen forty-one of the Minnesota State Building Code.
Thirteen forty-one?
Correct.
Okay. And the reason why I use ADA standards is because I checked with our billing official already when this came up. And he says that the state building code does not dictate the slope of trails and that we would use the ADA as a guidance. And so, I don't know if he knows about chapter thirteen forty-one, but I'll double-check now that I have a reference to see what I have to.
There is specific language with percentage of rampage you can have on a trail or anything that's accessible for a wheelchair. So, it has it all built in there, just like a ramp at a curb is different from a ramp to the entrance of a building. This is a trail and a sidewalk. That's all in that code.
So, we'll double-check. Thanks.
Okay.
But the aspirational goal, I think, is honorable in that it should be accessible.
Absolutely. That's my point, exactly. But let's make it accessible to the right standard, not one that really doesn't exist in this case.
Alright. I'll add another comment, since we've got this graphic up on the screen. I think adjusting the path is a good idea from a drainage standpoint, but I was also thinking about the concept of the buffer. And so, I heard you, the buffer accomplishes a lot of different things for us. I heard you mention, you know, screening views. It also creates a, you know, a view corridor as people drive through the city. But another one that we've talked about in the past is with regard to shielding the individual homeowners from headlights. And so, when you, when you look at the overall plan, you know, this is one of those conditions that's ripe for that light conflict because the road is sort of bending slightly as it meets the site. And with the elevation, you know, I think the elevated roadway in line with the, with the homes is almost ideal for headlights. So, it wasn't quite clear to me in terms of how much of the tree cover in that zone is deciduous as opposed to sort of year-round blockage of headlights.
The landscaping plan, the proposed landscaping plan, all of these are evergreens, so the only deciduous ones were the one at the top and one at the bottom. What staff is recommending is not to remove any of the evergreens, but just to add some overstory trees to it, deciduous trees to create that canopy so people are walking underneath the trail.
Yeah, I think that's good.
The comment I've got on is number eleven. I'm not sure that we have, we can limit the color of their trim selections. White being a pretty common color with every development out there. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. If you look at the elevation shots that we're given of the planned units going in there, every one of them has white trim. I'm not sure that we're in charge of design elements, but I could be wrong on that. I do think it's a great project. The market definitely needs it. The price point's fantastic. And I think the absorption rate will be very, very quickly once this hits the ground.
Is that basically just because of the grouping of them and how the weight stands out so much? It's more bright and it's the attractant of anything? Is that why?
Right. So, white, again, reflects light. And so, when you look at something, you'll notice the white first. And because the garages do make up the majority of the facade, we're recommending something that's off-white or beige or something. It is something that cities typically do review. And these villas or multifamily homes is the design of them. Cities typically don't review single-family homes as much. So, it is a condition that we can add to it if the Planning Commission and City Council desires it. I talked to Terry about it, and I think he's in agreement of it, so.
To clarify, Pat, when you say garage doors and trim shall not be white, is the intent just that the garage door trim shall not be white?
No, typically, yeah, it's typically the same color you use for your garage door is the same color you're going to use for all the trim. Because you don't want to have a beige trim around your garage and then have a white garage door and have beige trim around the house. So, if you drive around, you'll see if it's a white garage door, all the trim on the house is going to be white. If it's a beige garage door, all the trim around the house is going to be beige and what other colors you want to put in there.
Would that be something we need to clarify, then? That all trim and garage doors shall be of matching color, non-white?
We could do that.
Or of all non-white color? Because I would guess a white garage door is going to be cheaper over all the painted one.
I could, I guess I might be just fundamentally questioning whether, whether that's a true statement that trim color is always linked to garage door color. If our, if our real goal is just to limit the garage door color to not be white, it almost seems to make more sense to me to say the garage door and the garage trim shall not be white. But why, but why limit the general color of the trim of the house to not be white?
I agree.
That's my, that's my, that's my reaction to that, is that by linking the two, all trim seems a little too restrictive in that I understand the intent of the, you know, the size of the garage and the garage door. And while it might be practical that some may choose, you know, to color the trim the same as the garage door, I don't know that linking them is necessary.
I don't know that it's our position to call that shot. That's a market-driven decision, I would think. And that's up to the builder to actually build in the product, and the consumer is actually going to buy the product to make that call. And if we make the call here in a detached villa, where do we, where do we take it from here? Do we go to every townhouse, every single-family development moving forward? Just a thought.
One other thing to consider, too, is whenever, it needs to be repaired years down the road. Trim, trim has to be repaired occasionally and replaced, and so, how do you enforce that?
So.
People paint and change colors all the time, so.
And you have that provision difficulty with any regulations? That, a lot of times, they're going to be difficult to enforce, but as, as long as you have it there, and you probably have it in the homeowners' association agreement, hopefully they abide by it over time?
My opinion is, my mother always said, "Never buy a house with the garage facing the front." It's because it's going to be over probably half of the size of your house. Well, it is this way. I agree that the doors do not need to be white, should not be white. But I think that we should not limit the trim colors at all. Architecturally, it's quite pleasing to see the white trim and the white columns. Personal opinion.
Why would we be dictating colors even going broader and not the HOA?
Again, it's something that the city is able to do. And when you're able to, having a garage door on a larger house doesn't have that big of an impact than having a garage door that makes up half of your villa lot. Or half your villa. And so, what staff was trying to do is just And so what staff was trying to do is just downplay the presence of a garage door. I mean, these are gonna be tight villas, fifteen feet away from each other, sixteen feet away from each other, and half of these garage doors, or half of the facade is gonna be that garage door. So you're gonna be, in that whole cul-de-sac, you're gonna be looking at garage doors. We are trying to downplay them and try to come up with something besides white.
I'd agree with your thought process totally. I mean, it makes sense, but my concern is, as a city, is that something we should, just because we can, should we? So now we've just approved a whole bunch of sixty-five-foot lots, single-family lots in other developments in our community. Most of those lots are gonna have a three-car garage right up front. That's thirty-two feet, leaving the ten-foot sideyard setbacks. Now we got fifty-two feet, leaving ten feet for the front door and the front stoop. So it's as big or larger an issue in those developments as it is this project. I just don't know if it's our position to be telling the market, the developer, the builder, how to build their product, and what kind of repercussions are we gonna be dealing with as a commission and as a city trying to dictate their market? Or if for some silly reason the market fails because the garages are white, I don't want it to be my problem. It's, I agree with, we should deal with the setbacks, the side yard, the structural aspects that cannot be changed. I'm just challenged by the fact that should we be talking about the design elements and putting that as a condition of the project? It's more principle than it is just because we can, is I guess where I'm struggling with it. And I'm not sure the rest of the commission feels about it, just something I've seen them looking at all the elevations they've got, they'd be telling them they can't do pretty much everything they've showed us so far. I'll quit talking about it. I'm done.
No, it's a good question and good discussion point, because we do guide, there are design standards for multifamily. And there's a history of that, and, you know, it's centered around shared ownership of buildings and high-appearance retention over time, and the desire for the city to keep, you know, the housing stock, particularly multifamily, looking nice for years to come in a shared ownership situation, right? So now, this product is spanning somewhere in between. It's not quite multifamily. It's a higher density than traditional residential. So I think it's a great question whether we should go there. Because of what you're suggesting, if now, then where do we stop? With regard to single-family homes?
Color of shingles, color of anything at that rate. We're not really in the design end as far as aesthetics goes, but only for function and setbacks and lot sizes. I think that's the job of the planning commission, not to decide what color a house should be or the trim. I'd agree with John on that.
And that would fall in an HOA situation. Right?
If they wanna create that for themselves as an HOA and a developer, we'll let them do that.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's another vehicle that this feedback, I think the intention is good, the suggestion that recognizing that the scale of this house is something different than typical housing stock, and trying to mitigate that impact on an overall neighborhood. But is it feedback that comes from this discussion and comes from city that is to the developer less formally, or somehow communicated in the developer's agreement in terms of guidance, as opposed to a hard restriction or requirement?
Well, there's the lovely word suggest. Can you suggest in an approval? If you change "shall not be," we just suggested that the garage doors and trim shall not be white?
I mean, you could change the word "shall," the "should." That's more of a suggestion than.
Should not be white. In order to be more aesthetically pleasing, which is really what we're doing, isn't it?
If we change it to "should," it still goes in front of council, and they can make the suggestion of that then to make it "shall" or "should" also. At least they know where we would stand on it as a group, that we don't think it's our business to put in the word "shall" in that context with that line.
Yeah, that's right. If we just change it to "should," it's not.
Just so council's aware of the fact that we did change that from the original.
It's a good idea.
If everyone's in agreement, I might be speaking out of turn there.
Well, let's come back to this point after we have a public hearing and talk some more about other aspects with regard to setbacks. Anybody have any questions or concerns about, and we're, it's a PUD, right? So there's, I think Pat did a good job outlining some of the pros and cons, you know, we're easing on, I think, the maximum hardcover. It's fifty-five as opposed to forty-five that was in the original packet, right?
Correct.
That was a correction. And our sideyard setbacks are seven and a half feet as opposed to eight feet. But in return, there's the other adjustments to the site, trail, preservation of trees. Anybody have any thoughts or comments about that?
Overall, I like the changes, because originally, if you remember, I was for saving as many trees as we could on that in-lot, keeping that full size. But that's me in nature, but I like that idea a lot.
And also that trail. And I'm not sure if it matters, but you, Patrick, you'd stated that when you showed that first option A, that it did come before us. We actually saw when it was just a sketch plat, we saw option A and B. We made a few recommendations, and one of them was just that the original access to that trail was just behind, or between two houses, which was real narrow.
Right.
So that was done, obviously. And then, yeah, just saving those trees is great.
That's a good project.
I do have a question in regards to the sidewalk. You mentioned that the sidewalk was gonna have to go to the west. When development continues going south, is the sidewalk gonna, all the sidewalk gonna have to be relocated as well?
So here's a good aerial showing where the sidewalk is located on the Bridle Way.
That sidewalk, okay.
On the west side of the Bridle Way. And then there's the sidewalk on the south side of the cul-de-sac that links up to the trail. Here's a good aerial showing the two lots that don't have a sidewalk, where you see a sidewalk coming up to the property line of this development, and then it stops, and then would continue on north of Hackmore Drive. So that's the area that we had recommended adding the sidewalk to. It'd be in the right-of-way, wouldn't be in their property.
Pat, do you know if those two homeowners along Bridle Way have confirmed support for that addition?
Well, I've talked to that one in person, on-site, and then this person I've heard is dealing with some health issues with a family member, so it's hard to reach him. So I've contacted, again, that property owner and then the property owner to the east of Bridle Way, and I kinda explained to him that we're looking at installing a sidewalk in front of their house. If they have any concerns, issues, they'd call me, and I haven't heard from them.
If we had a live, right now, overhead shot of this, there's another house added there next to that. There's a one house on a quarter of Bridle Way now in Hackmore. There's a second house added right next, nope, if you go to the west, if you move your little hand, right there. So there's a house there. Weren't those two models, isn't that all driveway in front of it? Isn't it just one big driveway going out to Bridle Way?
You know, there was a temporary cul-de-sac here, and then they built the house, and then, and what they did was they removed that temporary cul-de-sac and instead had a three-car garage driveway, which doesn't meet our code. Our code limits the driveway at the sidewalk or at the street to be two-car widths, so twenty-four feet. There is a thirty-six feet, and that's why it kinda looks like, or feels like, it's a large driveway.
But there's space, but the space is there, that you could put a sidewalk there.
Correct.
Okay.
That's in the right-of-way, off the road, not before the property line stays, right? Or it's within the property, but it's a right-of-way set aside by the city at that time.
Right, it's in the right-of-way. The sidewalk will be in the right-of-way.
Pat, one of the things that it's not entirely clear to me, and this plan sort of highlights a pond access point to that Outlet B. And I'm just curious if we've lost that in the evolution of the plan as I look at the, yeah, it's sort of a, okay, so that's part of Outlet B. But yet, when we look at the landscaping plan, it doesn't look to allow the access that's needed. We've got a combination of spruce and trees, so I think.
I think the landscape.
We need to preserve that access.
Right. So landscaper designed it without having that access in mind. So we, there are some tweaks to it, and one of the things we can add is that landscaping be removed to provide access. One of the things also you brought up, removing the landscape in south of here, but also what we're recommending is adding some shrubs landscaping north of that villa. Again, just to provide some type of a buffer between that new villa and the house on the north side of it, the cursor is.
And I guess the same is true for the pond over to the left. I mean, that looks a little less dense in terms of the plantings, although there's lots of existing trees. But it feels like that needs to be considered, at least as a condition, that access to both ponds needs to be preserved and clarified on the plat. Is that fair?
Mm-hmm. I could add that.
Any other feedback before we open up for further discussion?
One more thing. The islands that you talked about in the cul-de-sacs, you said that those islands couldn't be there because of snow removal or snow.
Storage, I believe. They usually put them in the middle of those cul-de-sacs.
We have other subdivisions that have cul-de-sac islands. So there's, at least for me, there's some inconsistency. Why would we have them in some and not in others? Aesthetically, they're nicer, right? Well, I know that's a matter of opinion, but from an aesthetics perspective, an island is nice, and we have them in Victoria now. Why the difference, I guess?
And I do not know, being only been working here for four months, so. But I do know also, you look at Chaska, right across the road, and they have islands in their cul-de-sacs as well. Something I could research, but right now, the public works is telling us we gotta remove it.
With the woods being straight ahead, why can't they store the snow there in the winter? It's.
Right. That's one of the things we were thinking about, is there's a, you know, the big open area between these two lots would be a perfect place to store snow.
I know it's not easy getting around those with plows, and they tend to throw all the snow into the driveways, you know, but there's only a couple houses on the, you know, five houses on the cul-de-sac, so. They could push it straight ahead and push it right into the woods. Kids would love it.
So it's not a question of ownership. You're suggesting that there are other city-owned cul-de-sacs which have this, which makes that not reason enough to not have it here?
That's the way it seems to me, yeah. I know in my subdivision, there's one cul-de-sac without one and one with, and I don't know why there would be differences anyway. Why would we would put them here, so.
Which one is that? I could look into it. Excuse me?
Allegheny Grove.
Thanks.
Could it possibly be because City Works is gonna be maintaining that wooded area, and that's already a significant budget? Is that potential? I don't know.
Well, one of the conditions that we have in approval is that the applicant go and remove any of the dead trees or trees that are leaning over as part of the tree removal, and Public Works will go out on-site and direct that. Hopefully, that will reduce the maintenance of that wooded area, and what is left is healthy trees.
Comment I might have on the island is, is that a public or private road? I'm assuming it's a public road?
Public road, correct.
Comes a public road, how do we enforce the association to take care of the island in the middle of our public road? So from a future maintenance standpoint and manager's standpoint, it might make more business sense to remove it if it is truly going to be a public road versus a, a lot of times you see in a CIC that those roads are private, and the roads are maintained by the association. In this application, if it truly is a public road, it might make more sense for a community not to have that there. One less thing to manage or maintain, just a thought.
I agree that once it becomes a public road, then typically we would defer to Public Works for that type of a scenario, rather than dictate additional obstacles or ownership beyond that.
But if I understood, we're making it conditional, right? So maybe there was the feedback there.
Oh, yeah. Well, I wanna clarify that. So you got feedback from Public Works that suggested that that go away, right? As opposed to, I guess, how did that evolve? Was it Public Works review suggesting that that's an obstacle and the island should go away for?
Right, for snow storage reasons.
Right. Should we open up?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I will go ahead and open up the public hearing, and certainly we welcome your feedback or questions. We just ask that you step to the podium and state your name and address and share your thoughts.
So just under the matter?
Just regarding the Vassar preliminary plat. Anybody? All right. Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Did you wanna have any questions before the applicant? Or have the applicant mention anything?
I didn't have any, but does anybody have any questions for Terry? Terry, do you have anything you wanted to share?
I can answer your questions.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I think it's been a good discussion. I think this has been a good process in regards to, you know, we had an opportunity to offer input with the concept options. I think that's arrived at a good plan. Sounds like we've got a couple adjustments to the conditions. We were gonna circle back and talk about item eleven, if, whether we wanna keep that in there or adjust the language a little bit. I'm also seeing a potential new condition, number sixteen, which we can wordsmith this, but I just wrote down access to both ponds to be preserved for maintenance and indicated on the plat and planting plans. I think that would get you started.
Yeah, I actually added it under item thirteen, so as prior to final plat approval, applicant shall provide access to both ponds on the landscaping plan.
Oh, thank you. You add that as item D under item thirteen?
Correct.
Yeah.
And just for clarity, our motion tonight is to make recommended approval for both the preliminary plat and the zone rezoning, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And also, just a heads up, the ordinance that is recommending rezoning or would approve rezoning isn't a hundred percent complete. I still have a pass by the city attorney, but I will do that between now and when the city council sees it, of course, but just a heads up.
So Pat, are you looking for a single motion to accomplish both the rezoning?
You could do it in a, you could do it in a single motion, or you can do it in two motions. You could do it in a, you could do it in a single motion or you can do it in two motions. I wrote it as two motions, but that doesn't mean you can't do it in one motion.
All right, any other comments or questions? Are we all, how do we feel about the trim and the garage door piece?
I'd like to see the condition totally removed, just for simplicity. Condition number 11.
Both pieces, garage and trim.
Yep, just remove the condition in its entirety.
I would support that. I think, I think the intent is honorable, but I think it, it feels like a little bit of a. Of a reach that I, I'm, I've got some concerns about in terms of starting to dictate colors in, in single-family situations.
I would agree with that, it's a design issue, not a planning commission issue. Seems to all agree on that, with the heads.
Heads are nodding.
I think it falls under the HOA, that's where we go.
All right. Well, I'm prepared to make a motion. Let, let's break these up for simplicity. So, I'll start by making a motion to recommend to city council approval of the Vassar preliminary plat for a 29-lot detached villa subdivision on the Vassar property. Subject to the conditions as presented by staff. With the adjustment of removing item 11. And adding a new item 13D. Which implies access to both ponds to be preserved for maintenance and indicated on the plat and planting plans. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Should I keep going?
Yep, you're doing great.
All right. I gotta, I gotta get to it, 'cause it's another one at the end of the packet. All right, I will make a motion to. Approve an ordinance amending. Section 109 of the Victoria City Code, the city's official zoning ordinance, by rezoning all property at PID 654-69-0010. From agricultural district to PRD-1, planned residential district number one. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, Pat, these will go before city council at the next meeting?
I don't think they'll make the next meeting 'cause of the number of changes he's gonna make. So, it's either the next meeting or the two, uh, meeting after that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, so we'll move on then to the next discussion item, which is a public hearing for dock regulations. And is Paul gonna walk us through this one?
Yes, sir. Chair, commission, thank you, good evening. A little bit of history on the question of, of docks and the reason why we were asked to kind of look at this topic. There was a question of a conditioning use permit a month ago or so. Regarding a conditional use for a shared access plus a dock for shared access on a lot in Hawks Point. This was brought to city council. And there was a, a want to have staff take a look at docks in general and some of the language in the ordinance. Some of it was a bit confusing regarding how many docks one could have, what the condition of having docks were. And some of the language associated with different zones. Today, we have a staff report that kind of highlights some of the key items that we're taking a look at. Throughout most of this, mostly changes, specifically at chapter 28, which is the waterways and chapter 109 of the city code regarding zoning. We're looking at, for the most part, reorganizing where things are labeled. Particularly when dealing with the number of docks and making them accessory structures on R1 through R4. I have a line-by-line portion under the staff recommendation section. Specifically, removing the enforcement from the sheriff to the manager or their designee. We're removing the provision that is under. What's gonna be renumbered as C, which is no more than one dock should be permitted on any lakeshore site to number B or to letter B, and then removing that from C. As you can see, we're renumbering all of those in order to adjust for the addition into B. And again, at the end of this, I'll show you what this looks like in the context of the whole code. This is just a point-by-point. We're removing the items for commercially-owned boats and docks, since we don't have any commercially-zoned land in Victoria that's on lakeshore. In addition to that, we're removing some of the superfluous language from F2. We're adding accessory uses in R1, R2, R3, and R4 for docks as regulated in chapter 28. And then finally, we're removing docks from the shoreline ordinance as there's duplicated in every other, in the waterways and in the specific zones themselves. So, what this will look like, ours follows, this would be the section Waterways, Chapter 28. We can see that the sheriff portion is removed and the manager or their designee has been added. Yes?
Who is the manager and designee?
The city manager is Doug Reader, and their designee would be whoever.
It becomes a city issue versus.
Right, so I've noticed that in our nuisance ordinance as well, which we can cover later, but, um.
Thank you.
Yep, we, the sheriff does the enforcement, which is difficult, 'cause it's hard for us to then go out and do the enforcement. So, we maybe have a larger conversation in the future about how that's addressed.
For clarity, would it be wise to put city manager in front of that, just for people not relative to that?
We can clarify that, excuse me. But, um, yes, we can clarify that and add that design, or that adjective to that. Again, number of docks, we removed it from C. We take a look, there's, it added as B, number of docks, no more than one dock should be permitted on any lakeshore site. That was located at the end of the old B. And so, we're just relocating that to the top, so people can actually see it when they go to read the code. It's the first thing that shows up, as opposed to buried under a paragraph. Again, we have some privately-owned commercial resorts and boat landings, and we don't have commercial areas. Again, that's gonna be the new E. Moving along here. And we wanna make sure that, in this case, docks, whether permitted or floating structures shall be, should not be built or used until the principal building has been constructed, until a dock first permitted is obtained. This is making sure that there's a house with the structure itself. And then again, each accessory use areas, so in R1, R2, R3, and R4, adding that docks are an accessory structure. Those are examples of that. And then finally, removing it from the shoreline ordinance, so that it's more or less superfluous items. Particular one that we wanted to take care of was, uh, let's see here. Multiple docks or commercial docks shall be condition use within the shoreline area. It gets very confusing, because we had, that's what the Hawks Point item was concerning, and that's, we wanted to get rid of that. I did receive a number of calls and questions regarding particularly Lake Minnetonka. I think that was the area of most contention that I received. I had a number of emails, as well as in-person conversations. And it's regarding whether or not the city of Victoria actually has purview on Lake Minnetonka. We have here the local law, state law and local ordinance that basically enables the LMCD or the Lake Minnetonka Conservation District. And it says basically that for this particular ordinance or statute. That in order for the city to have purview, the whole territory of the city has to encompass the lake. And so, I would suggest that we don't have regulatory authority over Lake Minnetonka. And this is the enabling statute for that district, the Lake Minnetonka Conservation District. Again, this is under research, so we have, uh, we're gonna research this a little further and talk to, we. Did reach out to the LMCD, they're gonna get back to us regarding their opinion on the matter, whether they believe they have sole purview on the situation. But from my analysis, you know, what we're doing is just reorganizing the code and kind of gain clarity, so that staff can say, yep, one dock here. We can take care of that and be able to do it efficiently. There are questions regarding properties that have existing easements or. Or dock access not on a principal structure, that has principal structure not attached to the property. And I would be open to language that would allow that, or to allow that to continue. But that's something that can be discussed. Thank you.
Any, any comments or questions to start off?
I have one comment, you have a list of terms. And I think it might be advantageous to have site added. By having a definition of site, it just completely alleviates any gray for what an actual property is defined as.
Okay.
And how about as far as the number of moorings or boats or watercraft, I guess it would be, at each dock? Does any language change to that, are you proposing any of that?
I don't believe so, no, it's gonna still be for three.
So, what are we defining then? When we say watercraft, like the notes, some public comment was made by canoes, kayaks, talibors, they're all considered watercraft if they're over 15 feet and licensed by the state.
What I would think that, and this is something that I wanna try to do, is make this an iterative process. Where this is the first iteration, which is clarifying current code, so that's upfront, and so we can easily look at it. And then revisiting these chapters, so that we can take a look at the con, the context and content of them. So that, you know, if we need to look at, you know, having flexibility with definitions of motorized watercraft versus, you know, a paddle watercraft versus aircraft. Those are things that we can talk about and have a further discussion.
Staff didn't do any research to figure out what kind of regulations we would recommend changing. All we tried to do in this whole thing was just to clarify the regulations that we do have already.
Yeah, 'cause it was also referenced the variances for the lots, like a riparian lot that maybe doesn't have a shoreline that can have a dock on it. Because of a steep slope or inaccessibility, but they still have a home on it.
Right.
On that lot, how they could get around having a dock, maybe not on their, their site.
Right.
Well, so that's another point to answer, so that some, one of the public comments was on that, and I thought that was a good point.
Right, we can continue that conversation and try to refine that for context.
This, this might be another definition issue, because we, we have watercraft defined in the section. This could be the opportunity to expand. I think our current definition is a little vague and doesn't get to this. But as an example, when I look at the LMCD guidelines, they do define watercraft. And they also talk about which watercraft are unrestricted and not included with regard to watercraft density and, and what can be docked. And I think it addresses some of the concerns we heard, for example, in the, in the correspondence today. And they've got, it basically says the following watercraft are unrestricted or not included in the watercraft density calculations if not stored on, on the water or lift. 16 feet or less in length without a motor, 16 feet or less with a mo, with a motor 10 horsepower or less. And 20 feet or less without a motor and propelled solely by human power, such as canoe or kayak.
Right.
That, though, that increase, or that. That definition seems relevant to the section to, to expand on that and.
Key into it, if not more, on the water.
Right.
That's the key to that whole thing right there, 'cause if they have three boats out there, which they're allowed, and then have six kayaks. Then we have density issues in access and what we're trying to avoid, I think, by limiting it to three. So, if they're stored on shore, we can't really regulate that unless we have another one that's addressing that. And most of those are stored on shore or in a shed or up off the water surface.
Right. But I would recommend that if we're gonna propose changes to the section, that expanding on that definition to capture some of that will add, add some clarity.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and using LMCD, the Lake Minnetonka commi, or district's wording is, would make it more congruent with the Minnetonka portion of the lake that Victoria has shoreline-wise, so.
Right, absolutely. I guess, um, some other, some other thoughts that I have is that, you know, you, you touched a little bit on, on the jurisdictional piece, you know, who. At least with regard, regard to Lake Minnetonka, but I think that while some of, some of the changes proposed seems administrative at, at first glance. I think that there's some language being stricken that results in some more restrictive language. And so, I think that it's gonna be hard for us as a group tonight to get at a good, at a good general recommendation. With the lack of understanding whether what we're talking about applies to all lakes in the city of Victoria, including Lake Minnetonka. Or exclusively of Lake Minnetonka, the rest of the lakes of, of the city of Victoria.
And I think, um, from, I'd say from my perspective or staff's perspective. You know, trying to regulate these can be very tricky. You know, one question is, how do I go about doing it? And then trying to make sure that we're doing it effectively. Now's a good time, I think, just because, you know, it's getting colder and now's a good time to approach this topic, so. Taking the time to do that.
I mean, one thought is that. Regardless of there's ambiguity around jurisdiction, if it's not the city's intent to, to impose the, the guidelines here. On the Lake Minnetonka district because of, you know, what you pointed out with the LMCD. Is it just straightforward enough to, to defer to them, either by adding an exception in the language that, you know. These rules may not apply to, to the Lake Minnetonka Residential District, as an example. Somehow, I think, acknowledge where, where the guidelines fall.
One of the concerns with doing that route is it gets back, gets us back in the issue that we started this whole thing with. And that is a lot owner on Lake Minnetonka wanted to provide access to two non-perian lots. And provided an easement down their, their lot. And all the neighbors were really upset about having an additional lot, dock to, to houses that weren't located on the lot. And so, we brought this to the city council, and the city council looked at the ordinance and says, it's one, one dock per lot. And directed staff to clarify that for all lakes. So, by deferring it, just taking the regulations out on Lake Minnetonka would open that can of worms. Again, of allowing multiple docks on individual lots accessed by other people.
So, the LMCD guidelines also say one dock per lot?
They say one dock per lot, but if you have a larger lot, you can have multiple docks, is my understanding.
Okay.
So, it's, I think it's one lot dock per 50 feet.
Hundred, I think.
Hundred feet, so you could have, have a larger lot, you could have, that's how this one property on Hawks Point was able to get two docks on his lot, because he had a really wide lot. And it met the LMCD requirements, they got a letter from us saying, yep, this meets it for setbacks, number of docks. And so, that's why staff, you know, presented it, the planning commission recommended approval, because he had approval from the LMCD. DNR doesn't have any regulations over it, Menina Creek Watershed District has any regulations over it. Checked with the previous staff, checked with the city, city attorney. They couldn't find anything that would prohibit having these two docks on, on this lot. And then you saw the, the attorneys and all the property owners came out the night before, the public hearing and were really upset about it, so. We did find that provision in the watercraft section of. So we did find that provision in the watercraft section of the zoning ordinance, and that's, or that city code, it's not even in the zoning ordinance, it's in the city code. And that's what the city council says, you need to clarify this.
Yeah. One of the other concerns, I guess I have, is that with some of the language that's being, being stricken from section 109, it, it seems innocent enough, and I'll, I'll take an example, item D. You know, so item D talks about, the dock, you know, no dock facility should extend in the lake a distance greater than the width of, of a lot at the shoreline or two hundred feet, whichever is the lesser. So when we strike that language, the only language left then is back in section 28, which actually is quite a bit more restrictive. It only allows, can we move that? It only allows a fifty-foot dock or whatever it takes to get to a four-foot depth, which is quite a bit more restrictive than that. And then, you know, when you look at the LMCD language, it's somewhere in between. You know, LMCD talks about, they've got width of, width of a lot, or if your lot has a certain width, then you're allowed a, a certain distance, and, you know, it talks about a sixty-foot length. So generally, I'm concerned about, we're trying to clean up our own language to not conflict with ourselves, but in, in the end, we may be setting ourselves out to be conflicting with the LMCD, as an example. And I wasn't sure if our, our intent was to swing from what was two hundred feet or the width of a lot to get now down to fifty feet, right? So...
Right, and I think, you know, at least with the cities I've worked with, we always work with the most restrictive of the code. And so it's, it's an area of conflict where, okay, I have two different pieces of code that speak to generally the same thing. So the question is, which one do I choose? And, you know, whether, you know, we go with the current language that's in the waterways or this language that's in D, I think that either one would work, just that choosing one and sticking with it, so that we can have consistent regulation, I think, is important.
Do we have a sense of how historically we've approved or enforced this in the past? I mean, have we always enforced the fifty feet, or, you know, lakes throughout the, the City of Victoria? Or have we at, at, at times enforced the, you know, the shore, the shore width? Do we have history on dock permits?
We do require dock permits, and these are all good questions, by the way. We do require dock permits, but we don't get many dock permits, because the, usually the, the lots have already been developed. And if it is a new lake that we're developing around, we try to preserve the area around the lakes, so you don't have lots that are abutting in the lakes. We try to preserve it for our public. So no, we don't get too many dock permits. The question with regards to the length of dock is a good one, again, and it's something that the, the city council and the planning commission will have to determine, is do you want a longer dock, or do you want to sit with a fifty-foot dock? Because that's a perfect example of how we have conflicting regulations, and we're, we're trying to clear up. So that'd be one thing that we have to clear up.
I'll rest a little bit. Those are just a couple of thoughts that I, just can, just, I think we need, we can talk more about it, but just some points that I was seeing that are not quite clear yet.
And to feed on that a little bit, I, I really don't feel I'm in the right to make a decision how long a dock should be or how deep this should be. I don't live on a lake. I don't use boats, I'm not a boating person, and I don't, I don't have the knowledge to tell someone else what they should have for their boat, or how long their dock should be to get their boat in safely. I, I don't know that, what I'd like is these people that live on the lakes, if we can notify them, send emails out, please forward your information to the council and planning commission for the next upcoming meetings, so they can make informed decisions on how we need to regulate this. Because honestly, I, I don't know what they need. It's for them, it's for the riparian lot owners that own docks, it's not for me. So I, I feel I need more input to make an informed decision on something like this going forward.
Anybody else? Any comments or questions before we open up for discussion?
I think we might learn a lot real soon.
I think so. So, so with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. And we'd love to hear from you, like to hear your, your questions, your perspectives. You know, Todd, I think you make a good point, it'd be great to, to hear from some folks. We just ask that you step up to the podium, state your name and address, and let us know what you're thinking.
Hi, my name is Kevin Arnell, 6739 Iris Road. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you folks. I think that, I just became aware of the changes that are being proposed, and I don't think there's any ill intent or any, you know, thing devious going on, but I was kind of surprised that I didn't find out by a letter or an email. I'm the president of the Smithtown Bay Association, so I think there's like this community leader sort of thing, where there's emails sent out to, you know, people in the different communities. I never received anything. For something that would impact our docks, I would think that's important enough to at least get an email, if not a letter. So I don't think there was any ill intent, maybe it was just overseen, or there was a miscommunication.
With that thought, if I can interrupt you real quick. Aren't we required by statute to notify people that are affected by an ordinance change within so many feet of that effective ordinance change? Aren't we supposed to notify them by...
So we're required to notify property owners within a, a property being rezoned, three hundred and fifty feet of that property being rezoned. And then if we're making any code changes, we're required to notify through the, the newspaper, but we're not required to notify everybody who's affected by that change. Not only that, in, I have to apologize, Paul and I are both new, and so we don't know all the communications besides what is being required, but something that's just rule of thumb that I try to do, best practices. But on the other hand, I just, again, state that we're not, we weren't proposing to make any changes to the regulations, so it wouldn't affect anybody. We're just trying to make essentially our jobs easier. So staff and when it goes to the planning commission and the city council, there is clear language of what is required and what's not.
So for something like this, it's just a public, public hearing notice we have to put in the newspaper?
Newspaper, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I thought that maybe it was just an oversight, but it, it, I think, could potentially have a big impact on our community, and, you know, I'd encourage in the future to at least contact the community people that have been identified for that neighborhood. There's many people, I think, when I talk to our association and the neighboring association, there's no one that I found that actually had heard about this. It was all word of mouth that we found out at the last minute. The earliest I found out was Friday, and I alerted some people, and a lot of people didn't find out until Sunday. So we really haven't had a lot of chance to understand the changes or what the impact would be. And so we're caught a little bit off guard. So thanks for taking my comments. They haven't been very well prepared. So I've been kind of scribbling in the background here. My property lies in Lake Minnetoka District, and my dock's monitored by the Lake Minnetoka Conservation District, you guys have been talking about. I've seen the Lake Minnetoka LMCD rulebook, and it's, it's pretty thick in terms of the requirements for our docks, and, and we comply. And it seems to me that the LMCD does a good job of controlling the Lake Minnetoka District. And so I'm not sure if these changes were intended for lakes not controlled by the LMCD. So that was a question, and I've heard some discussion about that. It sounds like maybe there's not jurisdiction, and you're going to look into that.
Correct.
You know, if, if these rules come into effect to, you know, have more restriction on us, then there's going to be a lot more questions, a lot more comments. And I think that our community should have time to prepare those comments and look into that before there's any, you know, vote on moving forward with, with the changes. So I think it's, the changes, it sounds like are, you know, for the best interest, but I think there might be some unintended consequences that we just don't understand right now. And it seems, as I was reading through the changes, you know, I did pick up on, you know, some of the ordinances that may have good intent to clean up, but being that you're striking them, you know, could affect other people in the Lake Minnetoka District, many of which aren't here today to comment on, on that, or to discuss about how lengths of docks could impact their situation or their ability even to navigate to, to the shoreline. So for that reason, I would like to have some more time to be able to research this and bring more, forward more comments. And I'm not really sure what the mechanism is to have more time or to have, you know, another hearing or to provide the notification that I think a lot of lakeshore owners would like to have. But I would like the commission to consider what that mechanism could be, so that we could bring forward more concerns that we have. So that pretty much summarizes my comments for tonight. The three point, points were the, the notice of change, the questions on the impact on our property, and then the changes causing unintended consequences to our situation.
A question, if you had more time, how much time would your group like? Thirty days, sixty days?
I think more time's better, but I think thirty days would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question for you, sorry. So do you know of other lake associations within Victoria or other people that you could notify and help spread the word for us also in the meantime? I mean, that goes a long way when they hear it from you.
Yeah.
Hey, there's something affecting you.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we would be happy to, to help with that as much as possible. I think, I think some of us tried to reach out on Nextdoor, and I think there's some IT issues going on with that right now. In the past, we received, I, I've received emails in the past from the city on, you know, general communication, and I think I'd start there. Whoever's got that email list, to blast out, you know, to the neighborhood heads, might be a good way to start, but we'll do our best.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Tom Sheehan, 810 Smithtown Terrace. I'm part of the Smithtown Bay Association, I'm on the board. But pursuant to your comment, Todd, I actually called the president of the Harbor Ridge, which is our neighboring homeowners' association that has multiple docks. And they also indicated that they were unaware of the discussion that was taking place. They were confused by the jurisdictional issues. We've traditionally, for forty years or however long the LMCD has existed, worked with the LMCD, and they have also. And so the request coming from him is to represent their interest in saying, we need time to understand jurisdiction, and we need time to understand what changes are actually being recommended, review those changes, provide feedback. And all of that is kind of because this all came up Friday, and we're all a little bit confused. So thank you very much, appreciate it. And by the way, appreciate the work you guys do. I wouldn't do it, but thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anne Helscher, 920 Smithtown Terrace. So I'm a property owner on Lake Minnetoka. I am also the City of Victoria's representative on the LMCD. I'm not here to speak on behalf of the LMCD, I'm not authorized to do that. But I can tell you that as a board member on the LMCD, we do think about these things a lot, and we try really hard to balance all the competing interests on the lake. I have had some conversations with the City of Victoria over the years about different things, and my hope is that we find consistency, that not everything the LMCD, CD does will apply as a blanket across the City of Victoria and to all the lakes. But to me, it's a starting point. If you're going to look at something, look there first. See, can this make our job easier? Can we follow these guidelines? With respect to Lake Minnetoka, it's my personal opinion that we should follow the LMCD rules unless there's a really compelling interest to do something different. And I think if there is, then maybe the City of Victoria should approach the LMCD and let us know what the conflict is, and maybe we work at it from that point of view. So again, I appreciate everything you guys are doing. If you want to talk with the LMCD or you want the LMCD to come before you, I'd be happy to help, help facilitate that with our executive director. If you guys have questions, I mean, I'm happy to talk to you, I just can't represent the feelings of the whole board.
Quick question then.
Sure.
Have you seen this type of situation with other cities on the lake?
There's currently a jurisdictional issue up in Orano. So as a board member, a lot of the little dock applications don't come before the whole board. They're administratively dealt with, so the Hawks Point does, did not come before the board. It met the guidelines, so was approved administratively.
I got you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All nervous, hi. Courtney Noble, 900 Smithtown Terrace. I'm a homeowner on Lake Minnetoka, and here, my first time speaking in front of a commission. So bear with me. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am happy to hear that you are looking to, to drive some consistency, and I, I think that is always an important consideration. I think the strongest concern I have tonight is the amount of time that we have had to kind of process what is being put in front of us and truly what the impact would be to us as a homeowner on Lake Minnetoka. And so I am kind of coming here as one is a thank you, and to say that I feel like I've learned a little bit more about what you guys are putting forth. But I still feel like I need some more time to really understand that, and as it's been said by numerous people already standing in front of you, thinking about the LMCD and what they really have regulation or not over us or jurisdiction. I'm sorry if I'm not quite fluent on all the terminology, but I, I would really think that we would want to understand that before we could really help to, to come forth with any additional concerns that we would have as myself, a lake owner on Lake Minnetoka. I just wanted to kind of say anecdotally, my probably largest concern would be in the, the fact that you're talking about restricting the length of the docks to a fifty-feet or a four-foot depth water, whatever comes first. And if I've misstated that, I apologize, but I, I can tell you that as a homeowner today, we have approximately seventy-six feet of dock extending from our property into the water, and at the end of that point, it's about five feet, six feet in depth. And we have a, a lift for our boat. We have a fishing boat to kind of give you a little bit more tutorial on, on what is, is sitting in our lot. But I think this is important for you guys to know, because about two and a half years ago, well, just shy of two years, in July of 2016, there was a tornado warning that was issued in Carver County. It actually took out a tornado, some trees in the loose line orchard area out in Watertown, and there was a whole weather event that culminated with a very, very large straight-line wind event on the lake. And it may seem like it's no big deal, but we sit at the southeast corner of Smithtown Bay, and when the weather direction changed, there was a huge straight-line wind event that came basically from the northwest. And had our boat not been on a lift and out of the water, I can't say if our boat actually would be there today, and we probably would have had to replace it. Numerous neighbors that are sitting behind me, and they can share if they would like, had significant damage because of, of items like that. And even boats that were on lifts actually were struck off of a lift and taken away. And so I say this is, we need to drive the consistency piece, but I think we really need to think a little bit more case by case in terms of what type of scenarios could be happening. And so if our boat was closer to the shoreline, if we weren't restrict, if we were restricted more to what we actually could have in terms of the depth, my concern would be that we couldn't use our actual lift to be able to get our fishing boat, which is not in a large vessel that's on Lake Minnetoka, and it doesn't matter what size it is. It actually just matters the fact that I am trying to preserve my property and not have to deal with an insurance agency to, you know, pay for money to be having repairs done, which I know, again, a lot of our neighbors actually had to pay and/or had to leverage insurance agencies to have repairs from that summer event. insurance agencies to have repairs from that summer event. Anecdotally, I was out on the docks helping to try to save boats at two o'clock in the morning. And not that that's important here, but I think that being a lake owner and not necessarily you having the opportunity to do what I am blessed with every day, and that's to wake up with water in my backyard, or some people call it the front yard. But I think that it's just good for you guys to hear a little bit more about what an honor and a pleasure it is to live on the lake, but to know that we can preserve and protect our property. So again, I just wanted to say thank you for, you know, allowing me to speak in front of the board here tonight, or the commission, my apologies. And really, my ask is to, again, really consider what needs to be driven in terms of the enforcements that you're looking for, and is it really the dock link that matters, especially when you're dealing with a large body of water like Lake Minnetonka? And is there some ability for other provisions to be added based on, you know, the size of the lake with depth circumference? There's many different ways to look at it. And I also would like to say, and I also am a member of the Smithtown Bay Association, so not only do I live in the lake, but I am a part of that association, but to really make sure that we consider the amount of time that is needed to look at all of these details that you are putting forth in front of us. And I think it still needs some ironing out of those details, especially with the LMCD, and to understand the jurisdiction that they have there. And then to be able to hear again from all of you and the experts to know what you're putting forth in front of us so that we then actually have time to be able to do our research, not only as a member of the association, but also a owner, a homeowner on Lake Minnetonka. So I'm asking for more time. So that is all I had. Any questions?
Courtney, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I think your story of the weather event is a good one, but it sounds like the depth is a factor in terms of the ability to store a boat safely, right? So in the event of, as we start affecting dock lengths, whether it's fifty feet or getting to four feet of water, it doesn't sound like four feet of water may actually enable you to safely get the boat out of the water in a lift situation.
That is a very fair statement, Jeff. And I would say that, speaking also on behalf of the association, we do actually invest in taking out permits to dredge the channel that allows all of the other property owners within the association to actually park their boats and be able to get in and out of there because sediment collects, just as I had mentioned, in that nice little north or southeast corner. And so it definitely was a concern for me in terms of the depth, and at fifty feet, I was, I already knew that we were not going to fit the bill.
Just to pick up on Jeff's comments, just for our reference, how much does the Minnetonka fluctuate throughout the year? I know it's governed to some degree, but it does, it can vary a foot or two, I believe.
You know, I would say that I am not an expert to be able to answer that, but I would invite that if anyone behind me has that type of information, that they should step forward and answer your question, John.
Okay, thank you.
Courtney, before you leave also, with the four-foot thing, I've heard that so many times tonight, too. That's actually been one of our ordinances since nineteen ninety-eight, but I've never heard it brought up before. It makes me wonder what was said at that meeting when that was approved, because originally it could have been from seventy-five. That's when this ordinance was actually written originally, and then redone in ninety-eight. It just makes me wonder what conversation was taken then, why that was okay then, or was it just overlooked then by people, just like tonight's could have been.
Well, I wonder if it also might be based on conflicting language, right? Because there's, before tonight, there's language in the code that doesn't talk about four feet. It talks about a dock length to be the width of your lot at the shoreline or two hundred feet, whichever is lesser.
The original dimensions for docks, fifty feet are the minimum straight-line distance necessary to reach a depth of four feet.
Right, in section twenty-eight, but in section one oh, in section one oh-nine, where that language is being stricken?
Right.
So I think that's, it seems like that's why it's coming to a head now, is because there was two different standards, and now we're removing one which was much less restrictive.
So what I'm saying is this isn't something new that we're proposing tonight at all. So I don't know why it's an issue right now, it's something that's already in this ordinance.
I think it's because by striking the other language, which is less restrictive, you're in essence enforcing only that language that you're left with, which is the fifty-foot.
We would have had to anyway, because the most restrictive ordinance is the one that's enforced. Just like a code, the most restrictive code is the one that ends up getting enforced because that's the safest or the lowest level allowed.
Right. But there's been some ambiguity, right? That's the kind of the intention of cleaning this up.
Apparently, that's what we're running into here.
Thank you.
Sorry to confuse you on that point, but...
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Anybody else have any thoughts to share?
Edward Whipson, nine-forty-two Iris Circle, with all these other guys, basically. So I'm in a slightly different situation in terms of location. I don't, I'm not a part of an association, I'm a part of an easement, and my question is going to be directly on that. I was as well a part of these guys, I was not informed of this meeting. I found out about it through a former resident who was a part of the association that was aforementioned, and he suggested that it would be wise of me to show up tonight to figure out what was going on. So that's why I'm here, but I did not receive or see any public announcement about this. So I have an easement with a neighbor, and that preexisted my moving into the property, which we did sixteen years ago. The easement extends back into the early eighties and has exclusive and permanent access to Lake Minnetonka on a specific amount of linear footage down on the lakeside with an easement across a specific piece of property. The easement's never been challenged, it's never, you know, been in question from an LMCD perspective. I mean, I got a legal opinion on it before we purchased the house sixteen years ago, that it was clear and free of any encumbrances whatsoever, and it was not perceived to be in any risk whatsoever. My question is quite simple, which is, are you guys proposing to rescind any of the permission for easements and for those of us who are landowners who do not have a site, quote-unquote, that is on lakeshore per se, but has an easement to a piece of lakeshore or rights of use to that? Is that potentially at risk? And that's really the nature of my question and the reason why I'm here.
So I think that was something Patrick had brought up, is how far do we, this goal, you know, for further discussion on it, wasn't it? I mean, the idea that a lot of properties on Lake Minnetonka have lake rights agreements with easements, a lot of them. Graves Bay area, especially one of them that I happen to know, my in-laws all live in that area and have had lake rights, access to the lake with a dock. So I, you know, if that exists as it is now, I don't know how you can turn back time and...
It's the reason we bought the house.
It would be huge enforcement deal and legal issues, and it would break a city like this, I firmly believe, if we tried to go back and enforce a new code on an old agreement. Personally, I don't know how it works legally, Patrick would probably be able to comment on that.
So like any ordinance change, if it affects something that makes it non-conforming, it's a legally non-conforming situation. So if there are houses that are set back twenty-five feet from the front property line and the city decides, you know, we want thirty feet from the front property line, all those houses that were built at twenty-five feet would be legally, yeah, grandfathered in, legally non-conforming structures. Yep, they'd be allowed to maintain, sometime they can even be destroyed and be rebuilt. So you're pretty much grandfathered in.
As a city body, I don't think we have the right to take away your easement. I think our intent clearly is just to clean things up. If we've spent the last year cleaning up ordinances, we're really muddy and duplicated, and as a party coming into our community, looking at the current previous ordinances, it was just complicated. So we've got much more straight-line development rights set forth, it's easier to read and clean up. We are all volunteers, just like, we're here to protect our community like all of you guys are. So we're just trying to make things better and easier. So your voice has definitely been heard, and once this closes, I think we've got some comments, I think the time will come.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Todd Brown, nineteen thirty, Edgewater Place. I'm a non-Lake Minnetonka lake owner, so hopefully I can talk to the people of lakes that are fully enclosed or surrounded by City of Victoria. I've been on Wasserman Lake for two years, and I was on Auburn Lake for seventeen years prior to that, sixteen years prior to that. So I understand that the dock size is not being changed or from the language that was written, right? That's kind of my understanding of the, but I think that's what a lot of concern is. As a longtime lakeshore owner, I will say I am not following this, and I think the biggest issue is the water level or the depth. And what that means, Wasserman Lake as well as Auburn Lake could vary two to three feet of depth at the end of the dock, and so it can be very difficult. My boat sat in the water for a month this year as we had to deal with the low water through the end of July and early August, or most of August. And so we got this late rain, and now the water's up, and I'm at five feet at the end of my dock and am over seventy-two feet long. I also believe the language doesn't include all the different tops or types of docks, and so I would love for us as owners to get involved in saying, hey, can we, we want to agree, we want to make sure we're following the ordinances, but we're probably not in most cases, and at least I definitely am not, with the variation of lake depth. So that's my only concern. I'd like to have us get more input into this. I hear you, you're volunteers, we know you're not trying to take rights away from us or make it harder for us to live here. We all want to just follow the rules and wanted to voice that tonight.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Patrick, when they're talking about the four-foot level, they're talking from the ordinary high-water level, aren't they? It's just not a seasonal measurement at that time? How would they determine what's four feet at what given time?
I think it's the, from the ordinary high-water level.
So the hundred-year average, wherever that comes through, or whatever average they're using by the DNR or the watershed district, they say, here's where it's normally four feet.
Right. Every lake has a ordinary high-water level determined.
Anybody else in the public want to share any thoughts?
Just a comment on that last, I don't believe ordinary high-water mark is used in the definition, either in the beginning of the ordinance or at the language regarding the depth.
Good thing for clarity. That's why we're here. That's why we're here, exactly.
Yeah, I'd like to come back and talk about that a little bit more, too, a little bit later. Anybody else?
Yeah, there was a question about how much Lake Minnetonka fluctuates, and since I've been there, I've seen fluctuation about four feet, but in extremely dry years, it could be five feet. And so there's been times where people couldn't, you know, maneuver their boats just because it's so low, and so if you were to impose a certain, you know, depth, that may be, you know, your boat might be sitting on the sand in some years.
I can see in extreme years that being an issue, but I think ordinary high-water level kind of hits the average, and that's what they're shooting for, but four feet still might not be enough.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think I'm talking four or five feet below that. There's a Graves Bay dam that regulates the level on the lake, and sometimes they have to consider what's going on downstream, and they have to let more water out, and just so, although we're trying to be consistent, there are some years and changes on a lake that's being regulated by a dam that's very different than other lakes.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, last call for any public comments. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, lots of really good feedback. Appreciate all the perspective from all the folks in the audience. Since we, I'll just start with another comment. Since we left off with the ordinary high-water mark, I think when I look at like the LMCD standards, they do relate it more clearly to the ordinary high-water mark, but I guess that's partly why I think understanding the jurisdiction is an important piece, because what LMCD does is one thing, and it's one thing in relationship to Lake Minnetonka, but then also thinking more broadly about the overall community. You know, I think understanding that from a practicality standpoint, I hear what you're saying, Todd, that, you know, some of these standards have been on the books, but I think that the existence of ambiguity is, might be what's brought us to today. Now we're exploring some details that it's easy to say, well, it's been on the books for how long? Why is it such a big deal now? But it feels like it's a big deal because by removing ambiguity, you're sort of going all in on what that more restrictive requirement is. And even if I were, just taking Lake Minnetonka out of the conversation for a moment and just thinking about practicality, I'm thinking about a fifty-foot dock, and if it's four feet at the end of that fifty-foot dock, coincidentally, and most watercraft, you know, average boat is twenty feet, maybe twenty-five, maybe thirty feet. And so the front of your boat is sitting potentially in two feet of water or one feet of water. And so from a practicality standpoint, when you start adding not only safety of your watercraft sitting in the lake and/or sitting on a lift, you know, protecting that and getting out of the water, it doesn't seem like, from a practical standpoint, that that makes sense. And I'm no expert on lake use and docks, but what has me concerned about that a little bit is that we're now sort of committing to a standard that's not only more restrictive than what we had previously in the language, but it's also not consistent. So far, the only thing I've found that has some guidelines is the LMCD, right? And LMCD has a slightly different range in terms of, it does mirror it to the width of your site, and it has, otherwise it's a hundred feet, and then it has some other provisions about if you've got a particularly narrow site, but it's got other distances, right? So are we potentially creating a situation in which now, by removing some language, going with the language that we have, it's now, even though it's consistent with ourselves, it may not be consistent with either other guidelines or expertise? But it's hard to sort of comment on this and act on it because we've got this question of jurisdiction, right? So what was hard for me to prepare for tonight is, are the changes that we're talking about, while they might seem administrative, they may be more than that, and I think from some of the feedback we're hearing that this is more than just, potentially more than administrative change? But are we, are we making a change that applies to all lakes in the city, including Lake Minnetonka? We're trying to come up with a one-size-fits-all? Or do we need more clarity to understand whether Lake Minnetonka is a part of it? And if, once we gain that clarity, we can then sort of arrive at the best standard that either applies to all situations or has different provisions for Lake Minnetonka as opposed to the rest of the lakes in the community?
I have a question. Other cities that Lake Minnetonka touches, are they accepting the regulations of the LMCD, or do they have their own regulations that supersede yours?
I think it was just Orano was the only one having a jurisdictional problem along with us right now, correct? Wasn't that comment made?
You know, that's the one that is currently active.
Active right now.
And it's my understanding that there may be minor things that are conflicting that come before our executive director, and I don't know how those play out.
Okay.
But in general, LMCD is the governing body for what happens on Lake Minnetonka.
I mean, in general, I understand that the whole reason the LMCD was created was for this exact situation. So you didn't have, I don't know if it's sixteen or eighteen, fourteen different cities that border Lake Minnetonka and for, you know, neighbors right next to each other because they have a different address, have different requirements, and how do you govern that? And, you know, so I think that's a fair statement, that that's why the LMCD was created, to sort of govern at least consistently across the entire water body. that that's why the LMCD was created, to sort of govern at least consistently across the entire water body.
I see another inherent problem with this too, and I don't know how it's been handled in the past as far as within the city goes. Lake Minnetoka is a different deal. We don't have any enforcement. How are we going to go... Who's going to go out and measure this dock and make sure it's four feet at the end of it and it's fifty feet long or whatever it is? There obviously hasn't been an issue with this in the past. Otherwise, this would have been brought up. That fifty-foot, four-foot thing would have been brought up because somebody would have said, hey, I measured his dock. What is that, four-foot, four? I'm filing a complaint. You see how ridiculous I'm being with it to show the extreme? So it's almost prescriptive in a way where it's unenforceable. We don't have anyone that, for the city, that goes around on a boat and us Paul and Pat are going to go and start measuring docks on the...
More than happy to.
We can. They're doing it.
Yeah, true. But it's just, it's hard for me to envision restricting this from a body that doesn't deal with water. And Lake Minnetoka CD is, it's a great platform apparently because the people that live on the lake seem to appreciate it for the most part, and it's been working.
I think with a little more time, I'm pulling up Jeff's comment. I think we actually can find an ordinance that simplifies Pat, Paul's job. Make it easy that we get a one-size-fits-all. I think with a partnership with the LMCD with some time, we can maybe come up with something that fits all of us. As far as I know, everybody's dock is probably out. We probably don't have to deal with this realistically till March. We don't have a whole lot going on typically in December. So maybe we give them through a December meeting and bring it back to table? That's just a thought.
Chair of commission, yes, I think staff's position is that we review and continue the conversation and to bring it back to the commission at a later date, perhaps end of November or early December.
And that seems like a good suggestion. And I think considering all the feedback that we got tonight, lots to consider. Maybe we need some more resources to sort of understand or support a direction. One of the questions I heard in discussion tonight that I just wanted to add to, maybe this is part of next steps in terms of research, and it has to do with the multiple docks. You know, I think I'm understanding what you're saying with regard to easements that exist today, even though, you know, in all fairness, that's kind of the situation that going forward, that specifically I think what the city's trying to avoid. But I don't think the city is trying to remove that situation if it exists today. And I think there's a focus on multiple docks. But I, in preparation, I was realizing that there's another part of this equation which has to do with the Lake Minnetoka Residential District. And when I look at the Lake Minnetoka, I know you don't have it in the packet, but when I looked at the Lake Minnetoka Residential District, there's some language in there that seems to speak specifically to situations which have shared access to a site or deeded access to a site, multiple dock conditions, and, you know, created under a PUD or a conditional use situation. That seems to address some of the, I think, association concerns that we heard tonight. But we should be explicit about that and confirm. And, you know, as an example, if we want to be really clear that, you know, number of docks are no more than one dock, is there potentially an exception which states, you know? And one exception is those situations in the Lake Minnetoka Residential District as outlined in that section.
Right.
I think that there's probably nuance, and we've got to verify some of how that language is linked. But I think if we're going to take some more time to sort this out, we should add that to the conversation.
Is it the conditional use permit for lots that don't have a principal structure, I believe?
I think that's what it's under. And it seems to apply to not only the Smithtown Bay Association, which has properties in the lake, it probably also applies to the Harbage, which is a multifamily situation that also has some shared dock access on the lake. But that seems to be an exception to the rule that linking those sections in some way may be wise.
I think Steph, look at a possible. Lake Valconia's had some issues this past year. This has gotten a little bit out of hand. If we could do some research with Lake Valconia, the city of Valconia, to see how they're handling that. I think it has something to do with the large dock in Wagner Bay.
Excellent. I know in the west or the east suburbs, we had, since that's where I spent some of my time, the White Bear Lake issue with the draining of the lake and very long docks and having some flexibility to be able to still continue to use that and researching kind of, what are those standards and what happened and how we can bring that back?
I guess we... One of the other consistent threads with regard to feedback I heard tonight is simply notice. You know, having time for people to understand what this really means. I appreciate that when we started down this path, it probably felt more administrative. But it doesn't feel administrative anymore. And so I think we also talked about like, where's the expertise, right? We might not be avid boaters and lakeshore owners. But we seem to, we need to pull from some expertise somewhere. And so do we combine some sort of formal notice and level of engagement with lakeshore owners or some other expertise to draw upon, whether it's resources like LMCD or otherwise? It feels like that's a winning combination.
As a former resident of Albuquerque, New Mexico, I don't have too much experience with docks particularly, so. Absolutely.
Well, we've got our guys too. We've got the new Lake Quality... I apologize. I can't remember their title exactly. But we've got our new committee also.
Water Quality Committee?
Water Quality Commission. Many of them are lakeshore owners.
Absolutely. And I think Lance Fisher is the head of that board, so.
Correct.
He'd be the first one to contact.
I am also on that.
Are you?
That's good. Some continuity there. So I think this feedback's been really valuable. I'd be comfortable tabling this topic and allowing more time for that level of engagement and research.
Do we table it or continue it?
Well, I think procedurally we table it. Is that true?
You're right. Typically, you continue it to a date-specific, the item.
Okay.
And what we'd recommend would be the second meeting in December, which is, I don't know the date off the top of my head, but it's the third Tuesday of the month.
The second meeting? We have the first. Okay.
Looking, hold on.
What day is Christmas?
Let's him checking. Third Tuesday?
Correct.
That would be the eighteenth of December.
So we'd recommend continuing the item to December eighteenth, planning commission meeting.
Okay, that requires a motion though, right? Any more discussion before that? Anybody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we continue the discussion on docks and the proposal to change, amend, or recommend forwarding this to the council to the planning commission meeting dated December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the conversation will continue. Thank you all for your input.
Appreciate it very much.
All right, so we're going to move on to the next item under discussion. And we have another public hearing, which is the flood protection ordinance. Who's going to walk us through that one?
Why is everyone leaving?
They want to stay for floods?
You can put a boat on it.
The Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, completed the update in the flood insurance study for Carver County effective the end of this year. The staff at the Department of Natural Resources indicated that no structures in Victoria are located in the floodplain. However, as long as there is map floodplain present in a city, an ordinance is required for a community to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. A resident of Victoria would only have a chance to purchase federally subsidized flood insurance if they live in a community that participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. Even if the city doesn't have any structures in the floodplain, residents may still wish to purchase flood insurance. Actually, staff at DNR said that most of the insurance in the state is purchased by people that are not located in a floodplain. So with that, we, our staff has recommended adopting the attached floodplain ordinance so that residents may be able to purchase flood insurance if they so choose to do. Staff had the DNR review of this, and it basically is the DNR model, almost word for word. We moved some sections around just to make it a little easier for us to, and also more consistent with the way our ordinance is already written. Also, we also looked at, I looked at Chaska's ordinance, which was drafted again before I started working there fifteen years ago. And it is pretty consistent with what they used back then. So it's been tried and true. The city attorney has reviewed it, and so with that, staff has recommended approval of the ordinance to go to the city council. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you.
Do we have any structures in the floodplain now based on their new map?
No.
Is there any cost to the city to adopt this ordinance?
Nope. No cost to the city.
Okay. How about any future property we're going to annex? Any of that slated to be in?
That I did not look at, and I don't think I had the DNR look at it either.
Okay. So the people that have purchased flood insurance, they misled that this is for a flooded basement and not maybe the hundred-year flood? You know what I mean? It seems odd that they aren't in floodplains and their insurance salesman would sell them that product.
It's a good insurance salesman.
I'm glad he's not mine. So...
FEMA did just update all their maps this past couple of years, and it's made a huge, huge mess. Most of the city of Windstead and surrounding areas is now in the floodplain and never was in the past, which is making the transfer of real property very, very difficult. It's adding, flood insurance is extremely expensive when it's required. That's why I asked if we had anything in our district right now because it gets ugly. There's a lot of work with the state and FEMA right now trying to pull back some of their new aerial drafts or their new maps because it's caused a lot of problems.
It would also be impacted by storm ponds too, right?
Storm ponds are always set above the floodplain.
I'm not sure. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a stormwater runoff program.
I've seen, well, there, it'll, our, the pond in our back will come up way over its banks.
Yeah, that's a stormwater management issue, not a floodplain issue.
But it could lead to a, again, a percept, a percept or perceived flood, right?
Yeah, that would be if your basement flooded from that is what you're kind of getting at?
Well, our storm pond will go well beyond its banks if it's, if the storm management thing that you're talking about isn't, is it, doesn't kick in. And I don't know how other storm ponds would work, right? The little ones in neighborhoods, right?
So I think if your stormwater retention pond flooded over and filled your basement, you're not going to be able to collect on a floodplain insurance policy through FEMA, two separate issues.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
So other than that, in chapter one oh five of our code now that we have floodplain language, I think we should strike or pull out of there so we're not...
Thanks.
Two different chapters.
Is there an example you can pull up of a FEMA map? It wasn't part of the packet and...
I can go get one if you want. I got a hard copy. I can't pull one up right now. Take me a second.
Well, I just thought all the language about revisions to floodplain maps, and there's reference to floodplain maps. Is that something that, that's a hard copy that you maintain here? Or it's not available online?
No, it is available online if people want to, right? But we also have the hard copies here.
I would suggest if it doesn't cost the city any money and benefits our residents, it's an open rainer.
Yeah. I do think though that before this were to go to council, we should understand how the annexed area could be impacted by it.
Well, the annexed area, when it isn't annexed, would be fall under our ordinance that has this in it. So it would be, we wouldn't say, okay, now we got to add that.
And I'm not sure that the annexed area would allow us to develop in something within the floodplain. We have to be so many feet outside the high-water, ordinary watermark.
Well, you got to be above the floodplain, the high watermark of it, or make provisions to have flood-proofed buildings and water receivable buildings, however, as the language is.
I think City of Prairie Lake, I think they have to be above one sixty-one as far as the elevation height and stuff. It's all predetermined. I don't think we'd be allowed or give permission for some develop in the floodplain. A lot of stuff that's currently in the floodplain was developed long before ordinance.
So are you thinking, Jeff, that when we do annex more property that we have to revise the ordinance as it's adopted now?
Well, I would hope not, but I guess maybe that, like, that's a reason to understand it, I guess, is... I'm not sure I can answer that, whether there is or isn't. As an example, if we were to look at the annexed area and realize that even though today we don't have any structures in the floodplain in the current city limits of Victoria, but in the future we do, is there anything we would do differently about this ordinance? And if the answer is no, then maybe it's a moot point.
Yeah, I don't think we would. I don't think that we will develop in that space. It'd be a very bad idea.
But this provision doesn't create any restrictions on anything that's potentially currently built?
Basically, it says if they do choose to build a floodplain and we choose to allow them to do that, they can buy insurance to cover their backside.
A whole of Shakopee, I read their floodplain thing, and almost all of downtown Shakopee is in the floodplain. It's below the safe level, so they allow building and growth and everything. You have to, I mean, sometimes in certain situations, though. And there's this, almost exactly like the one we're about to adopt with some changes for areas, the fringe area and all that, so. But very similar to the DNR program.
I guess in some ways, getting this ordinance on the books is proactive, not only that it gives current residents the flexibility if they so choose to pursue insurance, but also it's now on the books for the future when properties are annexed that are a challenge or in the future if FEMA lines change again. This is, makes things available to residents.
Did this come up because someone asked about it or tried to purchase insurance?
No, we got a letter from FEMA.
FEMA, okay. That's their updated thing.
Yeah, saying we got to adopt it by the end of this year, otherwise we're out of luck.
Okay.
One of the questions that I had was on page six. And this is specific to the maps since we're talking about that. And, oh, so this is section seven dash three, general provisions. And under that is item B, and we reference the maps. And I'm wondering, and we include the dates. Is that going to, does that force us then to like, change the ordinance in the future when those maps are updated and they're different dates?
Great call.
Would it be better to just exclude the dates?
I think they... I'm pretty, I could ask DNR. But I'm pretty sure that they're saying that we want these dated so that they're specific to those maps. And you're right, if we do change the maps twenty years from now, we'll have to change ordinance and change the dates. Yeah, to say that those, this pertains to those specific maps.
Because in other situations, it seems like we would, you know, say something in the effect of, you know, the most current, current of, current map available from where? You know, from, at, as held at City Hall or as available on the city website or as approved by FEMA. Otherwise, every time FEMA makes an update, and I don't know how often they do it, but we try not to, we try not to have to revise ordinances, you know, based on the acts of others, you know. But if that's the requirement or best thing to do, it just, it seems like we don't want to be in the business of following date updates with FEMA or any other program.
Can't we add a paragraph qualifying, just what you said, just to add to this?
Well, at a minimum, I might, yeah, you add a sentence at the end of that paragraph which says, "Or the most current, the most current dated version as currently held and approved by FEMA."
I'll ask the DNR. They're pretty responsive. They got to me emails right away, so.
That kind of gives it the expiration date, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we've spent, for the last several years, we've spent a lot of time trying to update ordinances that were like, sort of designed to be obsolete, you know, in just a matter of months sometimes or a matter of years because we use something that feels really specific of the here and now, but they're not written in a way that is... because we use something that feels really specific of the here and now, but they're not written in a way that is flexible. And, you know, like if I'm, if I'm a resident or anybody reading this, I would, I would find it more useful just tell me where to go to find the most current information. You know, what's the resource as opposed to, you know, there's these documents that exist somewhere that have a certain date on it. Because that date could change over time.
And I wonder with the map number itself, when it is updated, the map number's gonna change too. Because if it's a production map number or if it's an area map number, we should probably find that out. If that's our area number for the map and it just gets updated by date or is a new map number come out when they do a new study or new measurement 20 years from now? Just like the date, that could change too.
Another good question for the DNR. Trying to make your jobs easier, Pat, that's all.
Yep.
Generally, you know, I understand the intent. It's, it's really pretty boilerplate. The only questions I had is that there's a number of blanks. You know, under seven dash 11 administration, which for me is page 11 of the PDF. You know, on that second page, under C1, variances, we've got, we're trying to rebate, refer to certain sections. Applicable state statutes in sections blank of the zoning and ordinance code.
Right.
And then we've got another blank on the next page under conditional uses.
I'll, I'll fill those in when it goes the.
And then another one in seven dash 13. Any other comments or feedback before we move forward?
I'm good.
All right, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has any thoughts, we welcome you to join us. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Administratively, that was important that we follow the, the protocol. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we recommend approval to city council of the new floodplain ordinance as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, again, goes to city council. Will it be this next meeting or possibly?
Yeah, I think it'll be this next meeting.
Sounds good. So moving on in our agenda tonight then, we have council meeting updates. Looks like we had two of them since we met last, September 24th, October 8th. Not sure who attended or if anybody has any items to share relevant to the planning commission.
Based on the schedule that was put out earlier in the year, I had 10-8. And there was one item worth noting regarding the retaining wall issue. I'm not sure if anybody else is familiar with it and Pat, you might be able to do a better job of explaining it than I would, but there was a resident who built a pool and there was the need for a retaining wall from neighbor to neighbor. And the, the mayor said that we should pay for the retaining wall. And there was a limit, a limited dollar amount spend regarding who should pay for it, the developer or the developer or the homeowner or the city. So the only reason I'm bringing it up now is if we start moving into, into developments where we start discussing plats and the needs for retaining walls, that might impact us. That was the only thing that I had. Pat, do you have any more detail on any of that whole retaining wall issue or something I may have missed?
Yeah, so the, the question came up is just, we do have a requirement that ASBelt surveys are submitted prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for a house. Before Ben and Aaron worked here, staff never enforced that ordinance provision. When Ben and Aaron worked here, they were, because of lack of, or not lack, but because of time constraints, what they did was they selected which houses they believed were, would have some potential issues with the grading and required ASBelt's surveys for those. The mayor brought this to our attention because one house was graded two or three feet higher than the neighboring house and there was no retaining wall. And the residents contacted them and, you know, contacted the mayor and tried to figure out what, what can be done. And so what staff is gonna do is we're gonna talk and figure out like best management practices of how we move forward with these ASBelt requirements and grading in general.
So how long has this house been finished? They both have their COs.
January.
Is it January? Yeah, just recently.
There was a house that was, that was already fully built. And then the, the new guy who came here, he had, he had moved in January 18th. He's been trying to get it resolved till now.
So the developer or he built the house?
So it was, it was. It was a unique piece of property because it was one developer, two different builders right next door to each other. And so, yeah, the grading was just way off.
So isn't the language in the development, the developer's agreement with the city to have grade as the final plat is listed?
Right, so the first one built his and the builder is saying that he met the grading plan. And then the next one came in and he said he met the grading plan. The, the second one did, but at some point between when the house was built and now, added fill somehow. And the builder is kind of saying, he believes it's the homeowner that added the fill based on the swimming pool that was added and they put the fill around. So there's a number of people that are involved and trying to figure out the blame. It's a little difficult. So we're just trying to figure out how to move forward and.
And all the escrow money was given back because the COs were listed and everything's still.
Right.
Did we have a discussion about this recently, about how some money on each of those lots is held back just for that? And it's just, just a case where it wasn't enforced, so it got signed off on?
No, we don't, that's one of the, the, the ideas that, that staff is gonna be recommending, something Woodbury does, is they take in an escrow for every single family lot of $4,000. And we, we would hold that escrow for the completion of an ASBelt survey, completion of the driveway and of the trees. A lot of times, trees and driveways and ASBelt surveys, you can't even do those in the wintertime. So when people are moving into their home that was completed in the wintertime, those three things typically cannot be done. So that's why Woodbury just says, give us a $4,000 escrow. You can issue the CO, but you can't get your $4,000 back until you complete those three things.
But an escrow be in place for a swimming pool?
No, we don't require an escrow for a swimming pool.
I just think about additional fill being added later after a home is built. And you could still have that same problem and not have a resolution without an escrow in a, in that instance.
Well, then the good thing about requiring an ASBelt survey for every lot is then we would know that when the house is completed, the certificate, the surveyor goes out there and says, this property was graded towards the plans, he certified it, it's in the books. Now, if somebody comes back in later, builds a built swimming pool and puts in the fill, then we can go back and say, well, it's not the builder. He built it according to the survey, you got the ASBelt survey, it must have been your swimming pool type of thing.
You have a hard copy of.
Exactly, right.
Just to kind of round that out is, the, the reason I thought it was important to bring it up for discussion today is it looks like, based on my understanding of the discussion that the council had, that there may be adjustments to the ordinance or they're gonna relook at the ordinance, which I think would end up with us if we're talking about plat and grading. So that's why I thought it was important to bring it up. Especially at quarter to nine.
Fairly standard, a fairly standard thing with any city though is a compliance agreement with the developer and/or the builder and the money's escrow immediately. I worked at the city of Minnetonka and that's what we do for landscaping, driveway side of us. Give them a T-skill and you give them nine months to complete it. Because they might be moving at the beginning of the season and it won't be over. So it's, it's a problem though, because you had to have enforcement and another inspection and, but you get a hold on the money and make interest.
Which if you looked at the October 8th meeting is, the city council meeting is something that's being looked at with, through magnifying glass. The money part is, which isn't, doesn't have anything to do with it, because we're volunteer.
Not getting a raise?
That mistake must have stung a little.
Is there anything else from the 24th or 8th that you can think of, Pat, or anybody else?
I wasn't at the 24th, but Paul was and I think he may have a little update.
Right, so we had a public hearing for a vacation easement at 27, or 76, 79 St. Anthony Parkway, which is Whispering Hills. It's a little utility easement. It already had come before for amendment to the PUD and they just never applied for that easement. And so we held a public hearing for that and council approved, so that's the high and the low of it.
And then there was a little discussion about the tiff about the grocery store.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I saw that video.
Yeah, you, yeah, that was a good one.
I don't think, I think there was continuing discussion. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think they ever resolved it.
Well, the discussion isn't too long.
You can rewatch it.
It's gonna be continued too, so.
Is that all for updates? Moving on to miscellaneous. First one, monthly planning commission meetings. Is that kind of a leading topic?
Right, so this is one of the things that I highly recommend is to go down to one planning commission meeting a month for a number of reasons. One of them, it's easier for the planning commission members to plan for that monthly meeting. It seems like we're canceling a lot of meetings and you really don't know which meeting you have to attend. So if you had one, you had to attend like the third Tuesday of each month, you'd probably get more consistency. Another reason is developers, I, I believe, so at the city of Chaska, we always had one meeting a month and it's, it worked for 15 years and it worked well, even though they had more development than in Victoria. And a couple of reasons why it worked well is because the developers know it's only one meeting a month. So they're more likely to put the best foot forward in their applications and their proposals. And you don't have somebody saying, well, I'm just gonna put this together now. And if I don't get it, if they continue it, it's just two weeks. I don't, I only lose two weeks. The other reason it's, it's effective is because it's something for staff, it's a lot easier to work on a monthly basis. So that when we get all the applications in, we have three or four applications and we have those to review and then have completeness review and then you do the public hearing. You do it all in a system, so we become more efficient in getting what we can get out, which is important. So that's why we're recommending, and if it's something that you have to have a, a special meeting, you can always have a special meeting if, if time, if there's some time constraints.
I'll share just two caveats to consider and you can talk me out of it. The first one is that I've, in all the years that I've been on the planning commission, and it's, it's been a while, I've, I've felt like I've been able to successfully manage the preparation time over the weekend. You know, we get our packets on typically Friday and between, you know, between Friday and Tuesday, it's not incredibly disruptive to prepare because it seems like the agendas are such a size that allows to fit that in time. So the one caution that I, I just have is if we go to monthly meetings, is it have the potential to increase the sizes of the agendas and it's such that getting a packet on a Friday to prepare for a Tuesday may be challenging. You know, is it gonna kill, kill an entire weekend once a month because we get this huge packet and we've only got a few days to prepare? So if we do go that route, I guess I would, I would suggest perhaps more, more advanced notice. You know, maybe Fridays aren't, aren't enough. Maybe it's.
You get the packet out on Thursday.
Maybe it's a Tuesday or Wednesday before as an example.
Friday's kind of a drag.
We could try that.
And, and I'll just finish this last thought and then related to that is, my second caveat is that do we think there's a potential for monthly meetings to go especially long? Right, so are, are we, are we gonna be going until 10, 11 o'clock midnight? Because we've, we've got to get through the, the material, we've got to allow for all the public hearings. And are, are we okay with that perhaps unintended consequence?
That I'm not.
Well, that's why I'd recommend trying it and see how it works. Because I, I think staff can manage the agendas so that we're not adding ordinance changes on a meeting when there's like two or three developments type thing. So we'll try to manage it. Of course, there are gonna be some applications that come forward you have to review. But again, I think we could, I think it's manageable and we'd try it and change it if not. The ordinance currently states that the planning commission is supposed to have one meeting a month. So we don't have to even change the ordinance if we just want to reduce it to one meeting a month and always go back to two if we need to.
Public though, that it's twice a month, right? It's on the website.
Right, and that's.
Total access, so there'd be communication that would have to go out. I don't know if it has to be public notice or whatever, but right now the communication is, is the first and third Tuesday of every.
Right, we would have to change that.
Pat, can you walk us through a process in which a developer comes through and like, let's say they need plat approval and they're trying to create a design and they really need your participation in the very beginning? What does that timeline look like when they first contact you and they revise a plan? I mean, they, they, they have communication with both of you for a period of time before it comes here, correct?
Right, so the, the developers, for example, that are working south of Lake Marsh Lake Road, the Gashstock property and the Wilker property, I think it's Wilker. We've been working with them for a few months already. And it's not like we're meeting with them weekly. It's something that they meet with us once every two months and they have to make some changes to it. It, it's a long process.
I'm willing to try it. But I, I, I'm just, we, we may find out in that particularly busy season, you know, late winter when, you know, if we're, if we're facing, you know, three or four or five plats at a single meeting, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough.
Right, and again, it's a lot easier to add meetings to the schedule. If you, if you become too busy to say, okay, we're gonna, next couple of months, we're gonna have a, a second meeting and let the developers know that and we can spread things out. It's much more difficult while we can, we are canceling them. But for example, we have one developer wants to come in at your November 7th meeting already. So we're gonna have one item there and that's one meeting that we have to hold for one special one. It's a simple final plat. And again, personally, it helps us because we got two city council meetings and then two planning commission meetings. So pretty much every week of the month, we have something going on and it's tough to schedule family vacations when you got a planning commission, a city council meeting you gotta go to. So.
One, one final thought, it's out there a little bit and I understand all that. But are we, by going to one, would we at all be sending a unintentional message to developers that things are slowing down?
No, again, Chaska has more development going on, dealing with more developers than we are. And they're familiar with one meeting a month in Chaska.
Most cities I deal with were development. I gotta get my ducks in a row because I got one shot that month. And if I screw it up, I'm 30 days behind and 30 days behind and 30 days behind. So what Patrick's suggesting is not uncommon. So what Patrick's suggesting is not uncommon.
What time do these meetings typically begin in other cities? Same time or earlier?
Sometimes at seven, in Excelsior was at seven, so I'd say most of them are at seven. This one at six-thirty is a little early, which is a benefit, because you can get out earlier.
But there's also one thing that, notification, excuse me, notification is really important, and we saw that this evening. Excuse me. From the town I came from, every time a property was going to be developed, and the planning commission was going to be discussing it, not only was there notification in the paper as legally required, but there was a notice that was posted on the property. Visible for the people driving by, and it just, it was very helpful, it was also helpful for the planning commission members who didn't know exactly where things were. There it is. It just, we have to be transparent.
That, that came up, it's a little off topic, but at the last twenty forty comprehensive plan, too, and I said it there, anytime you're putting up maps, or you're just affecting people's property, I know we have the open houses, and we put it in the paper, and we're supposed to send letters, but I, I really do think we have to do a better job, because people get so re, they just react, and we spend half the time kind of adjusting to that.
Paul, I'll shoot you a question while we wait. Does the city, does the city council, how, will they be communicated to, will it impact them? Right, I mean, they're referring things to us, in addition to developers, right? We've seen city council meetings where they said, let's refer to the planning commission to get their recommendation or their opinion. Is, is the city council gonna be aware, how they gonna handle it? You know, all those types of things, because there's definitely a direct correlation from them to us.
Right, my presumption is that they'll be aware of our change, and that we'll be adjusting appropriately.
And I suppose in the case of, if we've got five plats, for example, that comes before us, our one meeting a month, I'm betting it'll be difficult for you, as city staff, to have all your ducks in row for all five of those to go to the next city council meeting, right? So you're probably going to stagger them, where maybe three of them go to the next council meeting, and two of them go to the one two weeks later, or.
Right, within the confines of the sixty, hundred twenty day rule.
Right. We, we try to get everything to the city council as soon as possible, so if, if I have to, I stay late to, to get those things to the next city council meeting, because we're cognizant of developers' times, and they want their approvals as soon as possible.
But their agendas may grow as a result. Right, if, if we sort of bundle things up at, once a month, then there's a potential that city council meetings are, are particularly full on those days following planning commission meetings.
I think if we change this to once a month, we also need to have definitive timeline in which we have to notify developers that the date may fluctuate, and that they have enough time to prepare, like with a specific timeline.
A communication plan.
Yeah.
We have, we'll have a schedule that, for all developers, that we meet, hear the deadlines for these dates. So, to Scott's point, which I'm really excited about, is when he told me about the idea of sending something out to all the residents about the comp plan. So, this is, I used to work for the city of Burien, Washington, and this is a newsletter that they had back in nineteen ninety-seven, so I've, I've kept it for over twenty years. Because I thought it was the coolest thing in the world. But it's the Burien Plan, and what they did when they went out with their comp plan, right before they adopted it, they sent this out to all the residents to let them know, and then inside, you open it up, and there's the, the comp plan with all the proposed land uses, and then a summary of all the land uses, and then on the back, you know, they have, here's a little thing to, to send in any comments. So that's what we're planning on doing. I already got the, approved the budget to send this out to all the residents in Victoria, and Hoyzyn and Kogler and I are gonna help draft it, so that everybody knows that here's, here's what's being proposed. So, again, trying to get as much communication out there as possible.
That's great.
That's awesome.
And the timing is key, right?
Right.
Sending it at a time that doesn't give the impression that it's too late, but, you know, early enough where, where residents understand that there was time to offer, offer input and influence.
And so I'll be drafting that this week, and hopefully get it out within the next two weeks. One of the things I'm gonna ask the Hoyzyn and Kogler is, is any specific questions that they would like people to, that they would want asked in this, like key questions, that the city council and planning commission would like to, as many residents to chime in as possible?
It's kind of an analog version of the, what was that software, the online? They use early in the comp plan process to go and put a pin and add a comment on, online? What was that?
Forgot the name of it, but.
Yeah, there's a, there's a word for it, but.
Pinpoint something, isn't it?
Social pinpoint? Is that sound right? This, this feels like the analog version of, of online social pinpoint, yeah. But perhaps more effective, because it's, it shows up in your mailbox, and it's not, you know, a link in an email or on a, on a website to go take the time and find a website.
Scott, you said something about a sign in a property that is proposed. What, what's the outcome of that, because I think that's a fantastic idea.
I, I've seen those, I think, Mary, you, you mentioned that just. There's the big one in Chanhassen, where, you know, with the Prince property and all that stuff, so I think.
Proposed zoning.
And that's a great job with that.
Right, exactly.
You just, it's a, just a form, it was an eight and a half by eleven piece of paper in a color that you would notice in the middle of winter. In other words, not white.
Well, that would be tricky with new, new construction, you'd have to figure out how to temporarily install a sign, and do sandbag it or whatever, but.
It's like a construction site, Minnetonka has them, they're four foot by eight foot, some of them, some are smaller, and it says, there's a proposed ordinance to change the use of this property. Contact, and they have the website with the project name on it, and it's done.
How is it installed?
It's just, it, it's a road sign, temporary road sign, so it's got legs in the sandbag, it's just like you.
Okay.
You know, and.
Like a real estate sign.
I mean, if it's small individual lots, splits and stuff like that, that's one thing, unless the use is changing, you really don't, wouldn't have to notify anybody, you know. If it's a house in a house, then so be it, but if they're proposing to put a liquor store in here, as opposed to it being an empty lot, that's when it should happen. I mean, that's one way to be clear as can be with the residents.
Yeah, especially some of these, some of the properties that are gonna be coming up south, you know, I, I think there's a requirement to send it to neighbors within so many feet. Well, there are, there is no neighbors, so a sign would be a great thing to do.
And it's all well and good to say it's in the Chanhassen, whatever that paper's called, I'm finally subscribing to it. And I'm not reading all the legal notices. How many people do?
That's funny, I read them all.
Notice that was referencing back to nineteen seventy-five.
Assume names.
And we know when our public hearings are.
City Shakopee has a similar practice, they publish everything with big banners out front, it's pretty cool.
It's good.
I'm all about trying this once a month thing, just because time is time.
It's after nine, right?
At nine thirty, do check out.
I'm willing to give it a try. Are, are we good on that? Can I add one more item to miscellaneous? I just wanted to acknowledge and welcome Laura as an official voting member now of the planning commission. We had a resignation since the last time we met, right? So, that makes Laura a, a full-time voting member, so.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I will add, I will not be at the November seventh Wednesday meeting, it happens to be hunting season, and that's what I do for the month of November.
Make sure you give us your cell phone number, please.
Ann's voting on November seventh.
Yes, there you go.
Going back to Jeff's welcome, I don't mean to rain on a parade, but does that mean we're gonna add another, another alternate?
What I would recommend, that we wait until March, because that's typically when you add planning commission members and parking rec members, and you go out there and solicit, so. Because it's an alternate, I don't think it's a rush to get somebody on board. If it was later or earlier in the season, or if we didn't have any alternates, I'd say, yeah, we, the city council should advertise for a new member, but since we already have Ann to fill in when needed, and there's only a couple of months, I'd just say wait.
Sounds good. I move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Have a good night.
Thanks.
Good discussion.